At this time, I'd like to call a Suffolk City Council work session to order, and our first item is regarding the Assessor's Office Citizen Portal. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, the City Assessor, Holt Butt will start, initiate the presentation, and I think Kevin's going to join in with him in a little bit. Billy?
We know that your office may face many daily challenges in your effort to deliver fair and equitable assessments. Do you have errors in your data and cannot analyze it properly? Is finding comparable sales extremely time-consuming? Do your citizens struggle with finding the information they need quickly and easily? Are the systems you're using outdated and hard to use? What if a company could ease your daily challenges by simplifying and solving issues in the assessment cycle? Specialist Solutions will help you generate fair and equitable values and improve engagement with property owners. Serving Assessor's Offices across the entire United States, Specialist combines deep industry and digital experience to make the power of data work for you. Welcome to a new era of smart data and easier work for the Assessor's Office.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Welcome to a new era of data management and transparency here in the Assessor's Office. Really excited to roll out our new property portal. It's been out for a while. We're still working on some things with it, but we're real proud of it. And what I'm going to do, in a minute, I'm going to turn the mic over to Kevin Pryon, my chief deputy, who I put on this project, and he took it and ran with it and did a great job putting it all together, along with Robert Lee in our office, and of course, the entire IT team who helped us out. Robert Bradley's in here now. He was a big help in the process. So it's going to be a little awkward because we're going to do a live demo in a minute with Kevin, and I'm going to be in the back room, kind of controlling the demo up on the screen because you can't do it from here. So anyway, Kevin?
As the world moves from the information age into the experience age, it's no longer adequate to simply make your property information easily accessible. Specialist's Property Portal provides an experience that goes far beyond just a simple property search. An intelligent search makes it easy to find what you're looking for. A clean layout presents all the information you need right at your fingertips, including parcel data, deeds, permits, and even downloadable documents. In addition, the seamless integration with other Specialist applications and county sites ensures that citizens can access a wealth of other relevant information from just a single search. Create a complete knowledge base for your county and give your citizens the ultimate property information experience with Property Portal from Specialist.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As Billy mentioned, we're going to kind of do a live demo walkthrough of the new website. We launched, I guess we went live like late spring. It's kind of been through some growing pains and things, and we're still not what we would identify as a fully polished product yet, but we're certainly well on our way. I think the product that has come out of this is leaps and bounds ahead of what we were concurrently delivering to the public. So we're really excited about this, and we're going to kind of just do a very brief demo going through a particular property card and the information that's now available to the public. So Billy's got pulled up right now, residential parcel at 5024 Riverfront Drive, and we'll just go through as you pull up each parcel. Our ultimate goal right there is to be able to have a front picture of every improved parcel throughout the city. That's one thing we're currently working on the staff with, but Billy, if you hit that arrow there, what currently shows up if we don't have a front image of the property is the sketch of the building. So each sketch that's housed within our CAMA system is available to the public and anybody that is in need of accessing it. So as you go through and you pull up the parcel, you'll see the basic information there at the top. On the left-hand side, you'll see the account number, ownership information, mailing address, and other information. On the right side, you'll see the current assessment data for that fiscal year. As you go down, you'll see the transfer data for the property, along with the last sales. Also is the assessment history of the property. In this particular case, it dates back to 2016. Next is the land detail screen where it tells how much land is actually available there on the site. And then we've got the building components. How big is the property? When was it built? The heat and AC components, as well as other interior features. One of the things I'll point to is this blue button here where citizens can go in, and if they see a discrepancy with their property information, they can go in and put that information in. Maybe they have three bathrooms, and we currently have it on record as four. And then, once they go in and submit this information, it comes directly to our office, and we assign it to the appropriate appraiser to go out and actually verify the data on the property. So it helps us to be able to ensure that we're maintaining the most accurate data possible on each particular property. Keep going down in the property information, and the subareas kind of list the various components of the property, whether it is a porch or a deck, an in-ground pool, detached garage, things of that nature. And then, right below that, is the pricing mechanisms for those segments. And then, lastly, within each particular property is the permit history. This permit history is what pulls out of our CAMA system. So it may not have the full details of what's housed in the zoning department, but this is what we currently use within our CAMA system at the moment. So we've also got, they can click on the pictometry tab on the property, and then you can get a full aerial view based upon our latest flyover within the city, which is 2021. And as Billy is turning it at the moment, you can look at each property from a north, south, east, and west direction to get various angles, you know, see exactly what is on-site for that particular property. And then, the other component to this is what's called community, and community kind of dials more into various aspects and components, not only throughout the city, but various groupings, whether that be by school zone, by zip code, voting precincts, et cetera. We're going to do a quick sample here of just looking at the Northern Shores Elementary School area. So as soon as he hits on that and clicks, you can see it highlights exactly the school zone and goes right into it. And as it does that, over on the left-hand side, all the statistics get generated from that particular region within that school zone. So we've got population data over there, assessment data, various assessment values broken out into commercial and residential and condos, et cetera. Again, population, median household income, education levels, race and ethnicity throughout that area, employment levels, all within just a couple clicks of just that particular school zone. And then, permit values for what's been done recently within that area as well. And then, the next tab, it kind of goes full circle, so you can actually do property searches within that area. And so, if we were to put an address in in this area, it's only going to search the addresses and the locations that are within the Northern Shores vicinity on that map. So if you were to put a street name that wasn't in that area, it wouldn't show up. So Billy put one in here and is pulling up a particular parcel that's within the Northern Shores District there. And again, this all just pulls back from the property information portal that we showed Ultimately, that's it. Both of them are, we're proud of what's been put out there, but we still don't think they're finished. Just as far as the photos go, for each improved parcel, we want to get a street scene photo for every house that we have within the city. As well as on the community side, we want to get other aspects up there, such as the trash days that are picked up throughout the community in various neighborhoods and things of that nature. So there's certainly more to improve upon, but we're excited about what we've got out there thus far. So any questions?
Council questions or comments? I've just got a couple of comments. Number one, I've got one word, and that's outstanding. I mean, I've been watching this. I kind of came across it a month or so ago, and I mentioned it to the assessors. It's awesome because I use it all the time. But the amount of information that you've put on there, demographics, and I just noticed that you had school zones. I didn't realize that that was on there. But also, what I was impressed with is, like I said, the amount of information, but it also has whether it's located in an historic overlay, because it has historic on there, and that's something I've been advocating for for years, is that, is a lot of people before they buy a property, or lots of people buy a property, don't necessarily know it's in the historic overlay district, because it's not something I think's required to be disclosed. So when you're doing your preliminary searching, which I do if I'm looking at something, I usually go to the assessor's site and say, you know, what's it assessed for? Let me check in square footage and that sort of thing. So this is another opportunity for individuals to be aware that it is in historic overlay districts, and we don't get some of these after-the-fact requests because they didn't realize that there were additional constraints of what can be done in those districts. One thing that you didn't point out, which I really liked, is that you have the ability, you can see that piece of property, but it allows you to zoom in and out and click on adjoining pieces of property, so you can look at the one next to it and see exactly what you got. And if you want to see down the street, you can see what you got, not only, you know, as far as the size and the assessments and what it is in relation to what you're looking at. And it has the zoning designations as well. So I mean, I just, the only thing I can say is just a job well done. It's something that we needed, and I think it would be a great service to our citizens and anyone who's interested in doing any business in the city or relocating to the city. So.
Thank you.
Billy, have you got anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Is there anybody else? Oh, we got a question all over the place now. Nobody had anything a minute ago. I looked down, it's like, looks like a Christmas tree up here. Okay, councilperson Butler Barlow, we're going to do you first.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, this is great. It's really, I've been playing with it a little bit, and it's a really excellent tool, and I appreciate you all implementing that. I have a couple of questions. Is this entirely replaced the old system? Is the old system now not functional? And this is, like, if you get on the city website, this is the only thing that's available?
That's correct.
Okay. I have old tabs open, so I need to just close all of those. The other thing I wanted to ask is, is there anywhere on the property card that lists whether they're in a city water, city sewer zone? Because I think that was on the old system. But, and I've asked that, I mean, I know we don't have a citywide map of all of that, but it seems like an individual property would just, you know, whether or not, that's just a question.
That's a good question, and I'll have to look. I would have thought it would have been out there somewhere, but I'll look, and if it's not, we'll fix that right away.
Okay. I just figured I couldn't find it. I, you know, don't know the system all enough, but anyway, but I think that's helpful, too, for people to know that.
Yeah.
Okay. But otherwise, super, really great, and I appreciate the upgrade.
Thank you. And it is a little bit of a work in progress, but we'll get there, you know.
Yeah, sure.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. I think it's a great presentation, but I'm just concerned whether or not, what effect this will have with the assessor going out assessing property. Are they going to be able to do this from the office? Or they still will have to go out to the properties to do the survey?
It won't really change our daily work. The other piece of this software, which is more of an internal piece for us, will help us clean up our data, but we still, we still have to go out and look at properties, put our eyes on them, and I will always, my staff will always do that. It's just, I think it's important for us to be out in the community, putting our eyes on things, because we get pictometry images every three years, I believe, so, you know, it's easy to miss things, and I don't, I don't want things to get missed. So we'll still be going out.
Okay. Because I also like worrying that if a person were to challenge something, they're able to put it in and challenge whatever the assessment might be for the size of whatever they might, the properties might, you thought it were, and it's not.
Yeah, none of that will change. And if somebody goes in and says, hey, we've got three bedrooms, you say we've got four, whatever it may be, we will try to call them and say, hey, can we come out and look at it and make sure everything's correct, other than that, and, you know, correct the record as we go.
And your web, is this on the website, or how is this, it's on the website?
Correct.
On the Assessor's website?
Yes, sir.
With the link and all that?
Yes, sir.
So all they have to do is go to the Assessor's website, and they can pull it all up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
It seems like we're going to go around the table. I'm easy. Shall I kind of ask one of my questions about the septic and the water? And that's so important, but I also think this is a remarkable move to the future to allow the public to be involved in what we're doing as well. I would think that this would, I can think of two or three instances in my head right now that you can just go online and look at these as the public calls in, and you can say, that's where it is. And I for one, I haven't looked at it, but I'm going to look at it, I promise, right now, to make sure I pay for the bedrooms in my house and the bathrooms in my house. And I think the public is going to be so pleased with this. So I'm impressed. I think that you guys have made your lives easier, too, because I think this is going to be a true asset for all of us as the city moves forward, and for people wanting to move to this area. And, I'm sorry?
I can, I can say this. My receptionist has told me that the phone calls have gone down by almost 40% since we put this website.
I can envision that, and I think that's wonderful. Now, we can really keep you guys knowing what you're supposed to be doing and not talking, I'm just playing. But I'm, so, this is one of the most impressive things I've seen in a long time with the city. This is excellent. So thank you. We appreciate it.
Councilman Richter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Billy. I have to echo what everybody else is saying. This has been a long time coming. As somebody that works in the real estate business, one of the first things I learned when I hit the office was how to pull up the parcel viewer. And the information on the old parcel viewer, while adequate, never really painted a complete picture of what the property looked like, and we were always having to email your office and say, can you provide X, Y, and Z? So I think what you have here is a significant improvement. I do agree with councilperson Butler Barlow about the fact that we do need to have the information on there about whether it is connected to the city water or the city sewer. And if it's doubtful, you know, in the old site, you gave the telephone number of the Works Department, and you could call up and verify that information, because there are a lot of properties that we deal with that are kind of on the fringe of that area. One of the other things that I'd kind of like to see, it's probably not a requirement, but it would be nice if we could put the borough information for the property. I know that that used to be on the old parcel viewers. It was on the front page of the more information thing.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a ticket I have already put in with the Specialist for that. But, and I will definitely get this other one in tomorrow, too.
Yeah, and I do really like the sketch that is provided with this thing, because we always go out and measure the properties, you know, that we're going to list, and if we come back and our math tells us that the square footage is X and the city says Y, we can now pull up your sketch now and try to see where the discrepancy is. Maybe it was a screened-in porch that got closed in that is not accounted for. So I very much appreciate that aspect. Is there a measurement tool on this site, too, where if you've got a piece out in the country, you can measure road frontage, that kind of thing?
There is on the pictometry tab, which isn't up right now, but it was the one earlier where you could pan around north, south, east, and west on there. Up at the top, there is a measuring tool there where you'd be able to, you know, pull a street frontage or measure across the front of a house or something like that.
Okay. And you can measure a straight line? You can measure, you know, for area? You can do all that?
No, no, I think that's probably one of the more helpful tools, particularly with all the parcels that we have that are out in the country that are irregularly shaped and whatnot. So, you know, congratulations, great job, guys.
Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. Thank you very much for the product. It's great. Like the mayor said, we've sat here for a lot of years looking for some of this information that now is available. And the other part is, it's going to take the councilperson out of the equation now. We can just refer them to go to that site, and there it is, most of the information they can get, and what's not, they can come to you and get the further information. So thank you and your staff and all, and great, great stuff. Thanks.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, thank you for your presentation, and once again, great job. There was just some good thoughts brought up, and as long as we're creating a new list, wish list of what to put on there, it's like, man, this is great, but, you know, looking for some more. If you're going to do the burrows, it would be cool if you could put the voting precincts on there, too. So there's something else you could add to it, which, you know, if you had a question on your voting precinct, you just pop your address in. And compared, like I said, I have used this multiple times. I, you know, we use it at work to verify people's addresses and what have you, and it's much, much, much more user-friendly than the old one. You know, when you search for a piece of property, you can put in, you know, if it was, you didn't know if it was a street, drive, parkway, I mean, if you tried to put that in there, it just kicked out, and you got nothing. Now, you can put in a parcel, be it a number, be it a street, you can leave, you can put drive in there, and it's actually highway, and it's all going to come up. So it's very, very user-friendly. And like I said, I know I said it before, I just love the idea that you can check neighboring properties and zoom in and out and see where you are in relation to the remainder of your neighborhood, and go out as far as you want. So great job, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our work session is, continues on with our 2045 Comprehensive Plan segments, and this evening is Transportation, Utilities, Services, and Quality of Life. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Keith Kennedy, our long-term, or principal planner, will, long-term planner, excuse me, will carry on the efforts that we've been doing over the last several meetings. With him tonight, though, you're going to get reports from all the directors that are in this category, from utilities, public works, parks and rec, capital projects, are all going to assist Keith this afternoon with the presentation. Keith?
Well, good afternoon, and thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Doeman and Members of Council, and thank you again for the opportunity to present to you as we work through this update of Suffolk's Comprehensive Plan. We've been touching on key topics as we go along, got some feedback from the public and shared that with you, and are working our way through really the big issues, the big media issues that we're addressing in the plan. As mentioned, we're going to talk this afternoon about transportation and more broadly what planners call infrastructure, the things that make this a great place to live, quality of life, services that the city provides, and really the big picture of how those things get coordinated. We talk a lot about the growth boundaries and land use, but we often forget how important it is that those things need to be coordinated and planned together. And we kind of started this conversation most recently at your retreat in April. You know, big picture, how has the city managed growth over 25 years or so? And this is really how that happens, by doing the land use planning and the growth area planning and the infrastructure planning together. And that, of course, will continue with this plan update. We'll build on what has happened in the past decades and look forward, most likely to additional growth. And again, it's difficult enough to plan services for the people who are here today, but as you all know, Suffolk is growing, and has grown the last 20 years and is projected to continue to do that. So makes it even a little bit more challenging for all of us to look down the road, serve the current customer, if you will, but also think about what's coming up next in terms of growth in the city. So again, we will be focusing on, with this update, looking at the growth boundary, looking at the two, the growth areas, how should that change? Should it change at all and where? And in what way? We'll be looking at our land use categories, another really, really big topic for us. Can we make that work even better for us going forward, as well as the opportunities that are out there, both within the growth boundaries, but also perhaps adjacent to those, to continue to accommodate growth and serve it going forward. But again, as Mr. Manager mentioned, we're going to focus this afternoon on not so much the boundaries and the colors on the map, but the infrastructure, the services that are needed. the services that are needed in a coordinated way to serve that growth and development as it occurs. So, we're going to invite some of our key department heads forward, starting with Robert Lewis, to talk about transportation. And again, just to quickly identify some of the key issues that we've been hearing about, congestion and safety, travel choices, particularly in the more dense populated, densely populated areas, understanding that we're the gateway for freight in the region, managing that issue, coordinating transportation and land use, and finally realizing this goes on in a very intergovernmental way. We work at the state, federal, and regional level to pull all this together, and that's really kind of the key to really making this happen. So let me turn this over to Robert for some details about what's in the works today and what's planned for going forward. So, Robert?
Good afternoon. As Keith has noted, there are a lot of different issues. I wish he could tell you some of these are brand new, but these are issues we've been dealing with for the last twenty-five-plus years that we've been here. All of these are ones that we look at daily. Transportation is one of those things we all talk about every day, how well it works or how well it does not work at any given moment. And these are just some of the key components. What I'd really like to bring you back to as we talk about transportation is this map. So, in pink on this map is the current growth boundaries. And then we have highlighted on that the different road construction projects that are ongoing in our city. You will know, just note a few outliers in the agricultural area. And what I would tell you, in those few locations that are in agriculture, those are maintenance projects, where we've been very successful with VDOT in the last few years, getting maintenance funds to fix a lot of our substandard bridges. But other than that, you will notice almost all of our highway projects have been within the growth area to support that growth area. So again, we very much stayed the task and followed along with what we're talking about. One of the big issues always becomes, how do we pay for all these grant ideas we have and all these needs? We certainly are always, several of us, including the mayor, the manager, myself, are sitting on regional committees, we are always looking for opportunities. Certainly, there's a lot more money flowing from the federal level today. Federal money has a lot of strings attached to it, but we're always looking for opportunities. When a new grant opportunity comes up, we go back, you guys have heard me talk about our notebook we keep of all the needs, and we start flipping through, do we have anything in there that we think would be applicable to those grant programs, and we start applying. There's a lot of programs we've been very successful for in the last number of years. Suffolk has actually been one of the more successful localities in the Commonwealth of Virginia with the Smart Scale program. When that program first came up, I was a little concerned at how well we would compete in that against some of the larger cities, but we've been very successful in that. And then there's a program, the Regional Transportation, Surface Transportation Program, RSTP, CMAC, congestion mitigation, air quality, and now there's some carbon reduction programs. There's a lot of other programs coming on. But again, we've been very successful in getting funding in that, and that's where a lot of these programs see the revenue share, where the city is willing to match up with the state on a fifty-fifty basis to share some of these improvements. As I've noted before, though, oftentimes, these projects are big enough and expensive enough that no one program will carry it all. So we ended up having to try to pull together sources from many different resources. Why do I bring that up? We certainly always need more funding in order to make this happen. So as we talk about growth going forward, one of the things, staff, we're talking on the regional level, but as a city, we probably need to consider, we need to start trying to figure out how we can find a dedicated funding source to help us move forward. Again, we've been very successful with some of these construction programs on our higher-capacity arterial-type roads, but as we talk about our collectors and our local roads, and especially in the rural part of our city, there are no funding programs at this point to support those. And those needs are still there. So again, sometimes we balance that with profits from developers, but again, there's a need there. We've got to keep, we've got to be diligent and keep looking for sources to help us with that, and staff will continue to do so. But again, you see on that, at the bottom on the left-hand side, there's a list of funded future projects. Those are ones that are dedicated and moving forward. It's just a matter of time for us to get far along and design, to put those to construction. And on the right-hand side, there's a few visionary projects. These are some of the larger projects we know, and the comp plan notes as being major projects we need to consider in the future going forward, to continue to help our city grow and be able to move forward. And with that, I believe we're going to talk a little bit about water and sewer.
So again, thank you, Robert. Another key infrastructure for us, and we work very closely with Paul and his team in utilities or water and sewer. So, a couple of the key issues here, as well as an update on service areas currently and what's planned from Paul.
Good afternoon. The next three slides that address drinking water and sanitary sewer, the theme that I would say would run through these slides would be one of alignment, or as I'll call it, balance. And I'm going to say balance within maybe three broad categories. How do we want to be balanced? Balance with respect to costs, the classic chicken and the egg conversation. Do we build the infrastructure first, and then the development comes later? Or do we time it so that we're keeping in track with the development, which is the way to go? So, balance of costs. There's also balance, we'll talk about that a little bit more on the next slide, which has to do with the water distribution system. Balance with respect to building infrastructure with respect to water quality. Can't get ahead of ourselves where we've got large diameter transmission mains that have water in them, very little demand on them, water tanks, where then we see a diminished, diminishment in the disinfectant residual as that water ages. So we can't have that. So that timing can be very tricky with respect to water quality. And then the third piece with respect to balance, I would say, and you see this in our CIP, which we've just started that process somewhat recently, going through the new planning process, is that balance between the new developments, as well as also keeping track of our existing system. Got to make sure that that's maintained. So that's also a cost balance issue. So, on this slide, a couple of things I'm going to highlight. Talked a little bit under the capacity for accommodating future growth, the timing, it's all about that balance. Sometimes that can be tricky. Off to the right-hand side, there's a heading that's headed, Future Drinking Water Regulations. That's one we're watching very closely. Got a couple of things that are stirring out there in the regulatory world. One has to do with, you might have heard, a class of chemicals called PFOS, stands for perfluoroalkyl substances. Think broadly in terms of Teflon. It's everywhere in the environment. EPA has just issued some regulatory limits on those that will be made final fairly soon. Right now, we're in good shape with respect to those, with respect to the drinking water quality, because we've done some testing on those. But those regulations are out there with the potential to impact us. They would impact us on the water treatment side, where we might have to augment the water treatment plant. The second thing to watch is, very much in flux right now, EPA came out with regulations related to lead service lines in older areas of the city. Right now, we're going through a required inventory of lead service lines within the city, which is due within a year, which we'll be rolling out to talk about which areas of the cities we believe have these lines. Right now, our water chemistry is excellent, such that there is no issue with lead service lines. But if what we're watching is if the administration right now requires, comes back and says, you need to take all those out of the ground, that would be a significant impact on our utility rates. So we're watching that. The last heading on that slide, Water Supply and Planning Protection, talks about planning for the future for water treatment plant capacity. We're finishing up some water treatment plant master planning right now that talks about a modular approach to expanding the G. Robert House Water Plant, which is up in Chuckettuck. When I say a modular approach, it's an approach that would allow us to add treatment capacity in steps versus all at one time and take a big hit with a, with a, with a large construction project. And move on to water distribution. So again, keeping on the theme of balance on this, we, if you look at, a little difficult to see on the slide, but you look at the central growth area, you look at the northern growth area, we're well positioned with respect to drinking water assets in those areas. The future growth areas, if you look at Route 58 and 460, we have plans, we're working towards completion on those as far as extending service down in those areas. The Route 460 Transmission Main is a great example of balance with respect to water quality. Ran, if we run a large diameter transmission main out there right now, not a lot of demand, not a lot of demand on the Isle of Wight Side, which is, would be connected to our system. So that would lead to a water quality issue. So we're trying to time that improvement with, with the demand. Moving on to sewer service, again, looking at the northern and the central growth areas, well positioned with our over one hundred and fifty-five, one hundred and fifty-six sewage pumping stations. If you look at the section that's between those two growth areas, if there were some service and some growth in that area, that would require an extension of service into that area to serve those area, areas. That could be either by, most likely by the petition process, where a community could petition for sewer in that area through the process that's provided for in the city code. So again, want a message of balance, making sure we're timed with plan development, and that the utility assets are there when they are needed. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jones, or Mr. Kennedy again, I believe.
Well, again, thank you, Paul. And another group that we work very closely with are Jerry and his folks. Schools, libraries, public safety buildings are all a really big part of managing growth and coordinating these activities. And when you look back over twenty-five years, you've built a lot of stuff. And so, Jerry's going to talk a little bit about that and what's coming down the line.
Thanks, Keith. As you said, twenty-five years, I've been here a long time. I've been here twenty-five years. So, when I got called by planning, when they were putting together these, these presentation boards for the community outreach meetings, they came to me and said, hey, can you put together a list of projects that have been done over the last twenty-five years? I said, yeah, I can do that. And I thought to myself, well, it's pretty easy, because I've been involved with most of these things. So I sat down, I started writing all these projects out, and I was going, my list got longer and longer and longer. And I was shocked at, I'd almost forgotten some of the projects we've done over the last twenty-five years. But, so what I had to do, I had to go back and revamp my list. I said, wait a minute, if I put this list together, and I put them on a map, you won't see the map. All you see is dots, a blob all over the entire city. So, I backed down and relabeled, I did, I said, major, that's the major projects that the city has invested in in the last twenty-five years. So that's what I narrowed it down to. But when you see this map, when I got it back and I saw this map, it quickly showed to me what we were going to be talking about, that a lot of our investment, actually, almost all of our investment from capital project standpoint, from the council, this council and the budgeting process and the CIP process, fell within these two key growth areas, the core city and the northern part of the city. What I listed here is forty-one projects that we've done in the last twenty-five years, forty-one major projects. If I had the whole list, it was probably over one hundred and fifty total projects, but I narrowed it down to the major ones, which were forty-one. And what this, what this, this map indicates is how much investment is done in that. I sat down with Budget and Finance here recently and said, hey, let's, can you give me a number of what we've put together, funding-wise, what we budgeted over the last twenty-five years with capital projects? And that number came out to be a little over seven hundred million dollars. Seven hundred million dollars worth of investment in these growth areas in the last twenty-five years. So, that's a significant amount of, a number of projects was funded to make those projects happen by this council and some of our past councils in the last twenty-five years. Some of the projects, some of the projects that we've done, I saw with education, there's been over, in the last twenty-five years, ten schools built. And we got number eleven coming up, which is JFK Middle School. These are pictures of the Florence Bowser and Colonel Fred Cherry we did back in two thousand and seventeen. This investment between these two schools was about sixty-one million dollars. And of course, we mentioned the JFK School, which they just received bids, they'll be starting construction here in the next couple of months, another major investment to replace the old JFK Middle School. Our municipal complex, back in two thousand nine and two thousand fourteen, we built the first phase of the police headquarters, which was much needed. It was antiquated in the old City Hall building. And we built the City Hall building in two thousand fourteen. Other public safety, two thousand three, up in northern Suffolk, we did Fire Station Five and Police Precinct Two, which was meeting the, the very, at that time, up and running growth in the northern part of our city, and this was needed. Now, we've come back, and now we've got to add a second fire station up there, which is Fire Station Eleven, to meet the ongoing needs up there in Harborview, the northern part of the city, which is Station Eleven, which, as you know, we just broke ground for that just a couple of weeks ago, and we're off and running on that one. Downtown, back downtown, we had quite a few things happening downtown that transformed that downtown. This particular project, obviously, the Hilton Garden Inn and Conference Center, and public park, Constance Wolf Park and Marina, was a public-private partnership to transform what was the old sewer treatment plant site to this very much-needed hospitality, conference space, and public park space in our downtown. As you know, back in two thousand five, this, this particular project was a major investment out downtown to change direction of what was going on downtown. And right next to that, which was the visitor center, if you recall, the old courthouse, which was replaced back in nineteen ninety-eight with the Goblin Courthouse, it sat here, it was used by the school board as their school administration building for quite some time, up until two thousand and ten, when we converted this, the old courthouse into our visitor center. And you couldn't have asked for a better location to locate our visitor center. This is the living room of our city. This is where people come to find out about our city, to find out where they can go, see our amenities in our city, find out information about our city. And we also added the pavilion the year later, which became, has become a very popular spot for a lot of our public venues, our farmer's market, private events can be held here. So, and as you know, another public-private partnership, the Suffolk Central Coastal Labs, we partnered with the SCCA folks and converted the old Suffolk High School into a major amenity downtown. And of course, up and coming, we got coming up here, and we're going out to bid here in about, just under two weeks on the library. So, looking forward to that for our new library downtown. And with that, I'll bring up Mark for Parks and Recreation.
All right, Jerry, thank you. And finally, we work really, really closely with Mark Furlough and his team at Parks and Recreation. As you all know, that's a very common thing that we hear when we're out meeting with the community about access to parks and access to the waterways. So, Mark?
Thank you, Keith. So, so this slide here shows our assets, and you can see, majority of our assets are located in the growth zones, with some exceptions with the villages. And in recent years, we have added down three recreation centers, beginning in two thousand nine with, or, two thousand nine with East Suffolk, and then we brought on the Curtis Mill Tier, and of course, we opened Bennett's Creek Recreation Center just this year. One of the other big projects that we've worked on is the Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail. We currently have two phases completed, and we're under design on Phase One and a portion of Phase Three. So this, this project has been, we've been making a lot of progress on this project. And along, as well as public works, we also are very aggressive with grants and with a lot of the projects that we're dealing with. We also are working on Constance North Park and, and the, oh geez, Constance North Park and the Suffolk Seaboard Trail. So, and that's all I have.
We have one more. Oh, do I have one more? I think we do.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's it. The other item was the festival park that will be going out to bid soon.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Well, again, as you all can see, it's a, it's a real team effort here in City Hall as we update the Comprehensive Plan. And I'm really grateful for that, for that collaboration and coordination, because I think it really puts us in the best position to effectively manage this growth and do our best to meet the, meet the needs of our residents. So, again, that's our formal presentation for today. Happy to answer any questions or hear any comments that you all might have. We are working hard on pulling these chapters together, both existing conditions around infrastructure and services, but also, of course, talking about the growth area boundaries and the land use plan, which will be the topic of your next work session, which is scheduled for October fourth. So again, thank you all for your, for your attention and your interest, and I'll stand by for any questions or comments.
Okay, thank Keith. Council, questions or comments? There we go. Councilman Bennett?
Yeah, thank you. This probably will be for public utilities, though. On the lead pipe in Suffolk, that would basically be in the older neighborhoods or neighborhoods or areas?
Correct. Part of the inventory process is going back through, is going back through various building codes to see when, you know, those, the, those lines were
building codes to see when, you know, those, the, those lines were ceased to be used. But to answer your question, yes, primarily the older sections, yes.
Okay. Because that's one of my concerns, with you bringing that up, is I've been seeing a lot on television about some of the citizens with the lead problem that they have with the drinking water. And if we have that problem here in Suffolk, I want to make sure we're addressing it.
Well, I would say, no, we don't have a problem with the drinking water, because what, what we do is, the treatment plants, and I'm going to say there are two treatment plants involved in this, and the one that primarily serves the older section would be the bulk water that we purchased from Portsmouth. But both plants, both ours and theirs, have what's called a corrosion control program. And what that is, it's required by law. It requires us to treat the water to prevent corrosion from any type of, from galvanized pipes, copper pipes, any kind of pipes, lead pipes. So we monitor that consistently, and we're required to turn those results into the state. We have never had a problem with any lead in the drinking water. And so we expect that as we move through this process, that if the regulations stay what they are right now, almost October of 2023, that we would not have to take any further action. What I referenced was if the current administration right now changes those regulations and says, we don't care how good your water quality is, we want them all taken out of the ground, that's what would add to the utility rates, because that would be an expense to go in and take those out of the ground. And the other thing to recognize that is there are two pieces to this, to a water service line. One is the city-owned portion between the main and the meter, and then the other one is the piece that's behind the meter, between the meter and the, and the dwelling. And right now, they're sorting through the regulatory process of who would be responsible to replace that on the private side.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Fawcett?
Hey, thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things, Keith, and this goes out to Parks and Rec. I mean, all the programs have been just great, Keith, the trails, you know, the parks are improving, Lone Star is getting some, some look. Of course, the Festival Park. The other thing is, is I would like to see somewhere along the line, we engage in putting some kind of a rec center in the geographical area of the downtown somewhere to accommodate our neighborhoods that are, that are down here that have less of an opportunity to be at a rec center. I know the rec center up on the north end that we converted from the Army Corps, I mean, the Army Reserve, the, that has just been phenomenal. That's just really taken off and, and it's got a lot of use. Lot of good projects going on, and a lot of things that have happened. We certainly have invested a lot in our city, but we also need to continue. And I'd still like to advocate for the Aquatic Center for our youth as well, that needs to be on one of our top lists of getting things done, because that was the top item that was, years ago, when we did a survey on Parks and Rec, that that was the top item that was asked for through the community, through that process when we did it. So I want to keep those things alive and well, that they need to come forth in the next few years to come, as we move through the 2045 plan and beyond. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, thank you very much for everyone's presentation. We got all the big hitters in the room at one time tonight. Great picture later on. Rather impressive list of accomplishments over the last decade plus. Like Gary alluded to, it'd be tough, and you just put the big stuff up there, but there really have been some major, major projects that have come to fruition, that have allowed us to serve our citizens the way they deserve to be served. And we've got a bunch more in the pipeline. Robert alluded to, you know, development as far as infrastructure is concerned, and in a perfect world, if it was possible to align development with infrastructure, it would be awesome. But I think we need ruby slippers and wonderwines and a lot of other things to make that happen, because there's just too many variables, you know, as far as the timing's concerned. We don't know what's going to be available when. You have projects come to town that we don't want to lose, because in the long run, there will be, to the benefit of our city, funding is always an issue, and most of the funding is on an annual basis. We can plan for, we can plan for and be prepared, which we are now. I mean, we, we were in the past, but we're really positioned well now with our capital improvement reserve to be able to respond to opportunities if it requires matching funds to bring some of these projects to fruition. So we've got a lot, a lot going on, and I can't thank our manager and the management team and everybody involved. Robert mentioned grants and funding. I mean, this is an ongoing process from Parks and Rec to the Police Department to roads. I mean, it's about being engaged, knowing what's available, taking the best shot to get what we can, because like they said, money's not everything, but it sure helps. And in our case, it really helps. And every dollar we can find somewhere else is a dollar we don't have to ask our residents to have to pony up to make some of these things happen. So once again, thank you very much. I'm looking forward to what we're going to have done in the very near future, especially downtown. I'm really looking at downtown with the festival site and the library and some of the other initiatives. You can already see a transformation. The transformation has been going on for a while. You know, when you look at the improvements that have been made, some of the buildings that have been removed, the retention ponds that are in place and all the preparation. So now it's just a matter of, of getting it done. So once again, thank you very much. And with that, that concludes the, our work session. We do have a need for a closed meeting this evening, so at this time, I'm going to ask the clerk to present the motion for consideration.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-311A8 and A1, the consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Community Policy and Management Team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Fine Arts Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Sister Cities Commission, the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, and the Todd Water Youth Services Commission. And item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in an opening meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Specifically, tax map number 10 asterisk 46.
Counsel, a motion has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams is running discussion of the motion. Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This work session is hereby adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.